I am going to call the meeting to order. It is 6 o'clock. This is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. It is February 21st, and this will be on Zoom and cable and YouTube and everything else. So if we can start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Treasury Warrant 2317 and Payroll 23PW17.
And do I have a second?
To the chair, to the members. Everything is in order in the warrants, but I just wanted to give you an update as far as Stone Ice. With the signing of that warrant, we will be in deficit mode. So there will be, after the signing of that warrant, $18,658.43 in the rep, just for your info.
And we have Leah online. Leah, you can hear us, correct?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call?
Glock, aye. Galvin, aye, excluding safe place.
Nichols, aye, excluding COA wages.
Waitman, aye.
All right.
Motion to approve minutes of February 8th.
And do we have?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Glock, aye. Galvin, aye. Nichols, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Thank you. So we have two separate ones from the meeting?
Yes, we have one from the eighth and one from the ninth.
Here we go.
Motion to approve minutes for February 9th, 2023, joint meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Glock, aye. Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman, aye.
I didn't realize the executive ones were in there. That's why I got a little confused.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Do we have anybody here for public comment? Nobody else is online, right? Just the presenters?
Uh, yes.
All right. We're going to have a public hearing for the liquor license for Bedrock Golf Club. I'm going to open the meeting. And do we have any discussion or is this just?
Yeah, so Bedrock has had a longstanding liquor license. Unfortunately, they did not renew during the timeframe that's required by ABCC. So as a result, they asked them or required them to start the process probably back at the beginning, which includes having a public hearing. With that being said, there is nothing about the license or the business itself that is changing. This is more just a process issue.
And you have all the documentation?
Yep, I have all the documentation. We've already started the process with ABCC, and the next step is getting the board's approval so that the ABCC can continue their review process.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? All right, if I can get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Roll call?
Glock, aye. Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman, aye.
And if I can get a motion on the license?
To renew, is this what we're doing or?
You're going to make a motion to approve and sign the LLA form.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Glock, aye. Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Waitman, aye. Mika, if you, sorry guys, if you leave everything out, I'll stop up in the morning and sign everything that I missed tonight. I'll probably be up at eight, eight thirty.
Okay, sure. I think Gary will be in the back, right? So he can leave it out for you. Okay, I'll send it home with Gary and he'll be there for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Department head updates. We have Director for Council on Aging, Nancy Nichols.
Do you want me to just sit here?
Whatever you're more comfortable with.
Okay, first of all, I just want to give everybody a copy of our newsletter, just to have and see me again and referred to if you like. Actually, there's something I'm going to talk about that I would like you to refer to. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, lot going on, so I have a lot to say. I could go on forever, but tried to condense it a little bit. So the Council on Aging continues to provide both referral services and senior center services. On page five of the newsletter, what I did was outline a little bit of how we are structured because I'm not thoroughly confident that people truly understand that. We're really kind of two agencies. We have the Council on Aging, which works directly under the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, if anybody's heard of that, that's our state agency. And then underneath the Council on Aging, well, the Council on Aging usually runs the senior center, which is what we do with the senior centers. So there's just a little bit of a description of how we're structured in there, why some of them are housed in community centers, which really just gives the community support towards older people in the community. So I'm not going to read that for you, but just so it's there for your reference. We continue, we have our Friends group, which is our nonprofit volunteer fundraising group, continues to work many dedicated hours to support the center and its efforts to support and advocate for the 60-plus community of Rutland, which as we know from last time is increasing. We now have more people over the age of 60 than under the age of 20, which was predicted a few years ago.
Can I ask a question to the chair on that, Nancy? Because I know, I think we've mentioned it before, but what is actually percentage of the senior population in town?
It's close to, it's over 20% reaching, I think, close to 25%. I'd have to check those statistics if we have it set at over 20. A few highlights since our last presentation, the COA, believe it or not, has successfully provided over 2,000 pounds of fresh produce to our seniors, both in 2021 and 2022. This was made possible through grants, like the CARES Act, ARPA funds that were awarded to us, and other grants and donations, and volunteers. Overlook Farm in Town, which, okay, practices sustainable farming and provides food access education for its contribution, over hundreds of pounds to us in the past two, especially this past year. And this year, through additional grants and funding, we hope to continue that, to offer fresh produce. And we have been able to offer it from nearly since the beginning of the season in June through November or December. And Overlook, now that they're kind of beyond their first year and they're growing and they're doing more education programs, which have also provided some senior education programs, hopes to maybe come into the kitchen, utilize some of what they grow, give recipes, that sort of thing. But it's been great because malnutrition is extremely high as we get older, just because it becomes harder, more difficult to be cooked, they don't train in the garden necessarily anymore. And even some of the younger seniors or just adults in general, work busy with family schedule that don't necessarily get the nutrition that they should, but it's prevalent in this population. We've also been supported by Canoyer Farm in Paxton, Berries and Booms in Holden, which we buy from, with the grant money, but they've packaged it for us, had it ready for, picked it for us, so that we've been able to distribute that as well. And then, of course, the Worcester County Sheriff's Department, under the guidance of Sheriff Will Evangelius, always provides to seniors huge throughout the entire community. They give a lot of produce at their senior picnic, and they actually held a senior picnic on site with some of the senior centers, including ours. They had one in August for us, which was great. And again, we hope to continue that. We should be able to continue that to what we've already received this year, and it's something I'd like to continue throughout. It would be nice. And I would also just like to mention Senator Goby, Representative Ferguson, and Congress Mo Government, again, for any support. Other highlights are, volume of calls has increased. We have an average of probably 12 to 15 calls or people who stop into the center every day, Monday through Friday. Anything from food security issues, fuel assistance, home health and/or nursing rehab services that they need help with. And those conversations could last 30 seconds, they could last 30 minutes or more, and they could continue another day or several days, but we're doing our best to help. Our salon, which is new, I think, since we came, we utilized a back room because it wasn't really doing anything, so we wanted, we have some services. We brought in podiatry foot care services, hair cutting services. We're looking at like neck and shoulder massage, maybe facials, very, very well attended in addition to the shining representative, which insurance needs for seniors, I know for a lot of generalities and subjects out there, and audiology services. Dr. Moreno, who is a resident of Rutland, has a business in Holden, has been coming out for a few years now, providing services once a month. And there's just things that they, people don't have to go out into Holden or wherever, especially during COVID, they could come to the center and utilize those services. Still a lot do, which is nice. Our volunteers, still running, probably 40-plus volunteers, including three from the Tax Work Program. We've had three participants probably since that whole program started, and they've done a lot at the center, from painting to repairing, you know, cabinets, whatever we've done. Those guys are great, and they have worked in other, in addition to their committed hours, have worked in other departments, especially this group this year. Meals on Wheels continue to increase. During the pandemic, we, Elder Services implemented a program called Grabbing Go Meals because nobody was meeting inside and coming in to eat the congelated meals. That program was very successful. In fact, it was so successful, people wanted to continue it, but Elder Services stopped it. I'm not really sure why, other than they wanted people to come back into the centers. That kind of dropped our in-house for a long time. So in November, we started to highlight a meal a month, and that started to bring it up. Those meals that we highlight are attendance 24 plus. We had 60 for our Valentine's lunch shift, and we'll continue to do that. And then it'll, it's actually started to increase daily coffee meals, which is nice to see again. Attendance in general is increasing. We're having more participants from other communities around us, which is typical in a senior center, but they're enjoying it. Our exercise is huge. Our, we have two certified instructors that do kind of cardio and general fitness, and then I have two yoga instructors that also come in. So we have exercise Monday through Friday, and our philosophy, particularly mine, is keep moving or you stop moving. So it's one program that I fund through the Formula Grant, which I get, and I would like to continue to do that. I don't typically charge for that, and they're very well attended, and I hope to continue to do that because I think it's probably one of the most important things that we do. So that's been great. We started a Lunch and Learn series, which is a topic, could be anything from history, we have one coming up, the history of flutes, from the original Native American flute to modern day. People come in, they enjoy a lunch, they learn the topic, or it could be a physician that comes in and talks about something. Yes, I'm becoming, they're talking about types of dementia symptoms and how to handle. We have a lot of families in town that is really increasing. So we have caregiver support for that. We have some local agencies that are working with us to help those families because it's really growing sadly. And we were told by the Alzheimer's Association that relatives sees one of the highest incidences of Alzheimer's in the state. So working towards helping people resolve that or at least deal with it. These are just a few highlights, and I invite you guys anytime, I know you're busy doing other things, but come to the center, learn about what we do, ask what we do, participate in what we do, because that's how we all learn. And we'd love to see everyone become more educated so you can help. Any questions?
Through the chair. Let's just go real quick on the Meals on Wheels. Is there a town vehicle that takes those meals or is that you doing your own car?
Our volunteers.
So they do it in their own vehicles?
Their own vehicle. They can get a stipend if they want from Elder Services, some do, some don't. But no, we have dedicated volunteers. We're actually looking for more and looking for people to be on call in case somebody says.
Is it unusual for a town, like if we were able to get a town vehicle, would it make the program better or?
Well, I think a town vehicle would make a lot of the programming better because transportation's a huge issue for people getting to.
I mean, I see that bus out there, but who uses that?
It's limited.
Oh, is it limited?
Elder Buses in Charlton, SMCA, I was confused, SM and Elder Bus. Anyways, they're part of WRTA, but they're like a contracted provider for WRTA. So they only cover a certain region and they only cover certain hours. So for example, they'll do medical appointments on Tuesdays and Wednesdays between 10:30 and 2:30, and that doesn't always work for people with blindness. So we're restricted, we're lucky to have them for simple things, but it would be a whole lot better if, certainly, if we had a vehicle, and a lot of towns do, or even if there was some kind of regional system, some of these towns owners don't have their one.
That would definitely benefit for events and stuff, but you wouldn't be able to do the Meals on Wheels because there's so many that one vehicle would take too long, you wouldn't get the meals to them in, you know, efficient time, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I mean, there are two routes.
You think one vehicle could do all the deliveries?
I guess depending on how, I don't know.
I mean, would you say the majority of the seniors that are utilizing the food program, they come to you or you bring to them?
No, more people, other than these special events, we hope to grow that, or probably our Meals on Wheels people.
Okay, so.
You know, 25 to 30 a day for people that can't get out, but again, those are the people that might also need the services to, you know, foot care or some other kind, to a medical appointment. And so it's always been a challenge.
Yeah. I was just thinking, we had spoken in the past about the supply of money we have. You know, we all want the Taj Mahal of building and everything, you know, the best of everything, but if we can get a vehicle and some other resources that we can kind of plug together to help the seniors, get the things to the seniors.
Right.
Again, that's your expertise, not mine, I don't know, but I don't know.
I would have to figure out how long the routes, each route takes, whether we can combine them or not. And of course, as needs increase, we may have more people that need Meals on Wheels.
Well, for events and other things, people for transportation, it's very difficult to use that bus for events and stuff because it's such a short window, and it's very limited for what they can use it for. The other thing that we also have to keep in mind is with the Rutland Heights coming into place, we're going to be adding quite a bit more of senior population.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So we're going to have to anticipate probably there'll be more needs for transportation and such for things like that, but.
Just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, Leah?
Well, I don't want to interrupt, if you guys are still, I just have something.
Sure.
A couple things. I think one of the things, Nancy, I think a few years ago, you and I have talked about expanding the regional, making a push to expand the regional transportation, and one of the big issues, not only a vehicle with trained drivers, and we know, I mean, I think periodically we've seen that Holden is struggling with a trained driver for the bus, for their Council on Aging bus and everything. So that's just something that a vehicle is nice, but there's also additional pieces that we need to be mindful of and plan for as well. And then the other question I guess I had, you mentioned, I think, that Rutland has, if not the highest, one of the highest incidents of Alzheimer's in the state. Do they have any inclination as to why is the Rutland senior population, like aging and face wise, that much higher than other communities? Or is there something going on, like out of curiosity? Because we don't have like skilled nursing facilities or anything like that in town. And there's, I think, we're in a medical, although we have Worcester and Holden Rehab and everything, we're still kind of in a medical desert in central and western Mass as a whole. And so that's another piece that I guess I was wondering about, if we could elaborate at all.
They didn't, they really don't know. I mean, I'm sure they're starting to do some research, and I don't know if they're including, you know, people that move from here into a facility. I'm sure they are because eventually that happens, or unfortunately, people pass away, we've done that as well. No, at last we checked, they didn't know why, and I imagine it would take years of research to get some of those answers. I mean, are you thinking that because people are more isolated, or you think they're not counting the people who have left Rutland to go into a facility?
I have no idea. I was just curious as to how, like how they arrived at that number because Rutland's population is not, it's not much different than a lot of other community populations, I wouldn't think. And so I was just curious if there was something environmental or if it was, you know, speaks to more folks aging and face, or I have no idea.
They really didn't have an answer. As far as if it were environmental, it would be a guessing game at this point, and they'd have to do some research and try and figure out, to try and pinpoint something like that. So I don't know, but we did ask them, and these were numbers that were given to us last, last year, and again, like in September of, still last year, but not a year ago, 22. I could find out more, and I don't know, because at the time, they didn't know the answers to that.
It's just an interesting piece, and I think something that, you know, to Linda's point, as the heights of the city pick up and everything, that we tend to, there's an increase in 50 by the block housing that we, as a community, should be mindful of as well, and what services that might look like.
Right, I mean, we'll definitely, we'll need to increase services somehow, like everybody else.
And would you say that you've seen like an increase of parents moving back with their children to Rutland?
We have.
So that's another thing that, you know, parents are coming back, and they may be coming back because they, they need that family support, so, you know, the.
Well, sadly, it's usually the other way around. They come back because they want to give the younger generation the help, and then they end up in trouble. You know, not all of them certainly, but we've seen a handful of them. More people that have moved out of the community and then are coming back because people, I can probably count four by the stuff I had that had moved Florida a few years and now are coming back. Because they have family there.
Any other questions?
Sorry, I couldn't directly answer your question, but we're always asking for more information, but it's just, without any numbers, just the increase that we have seen in phone calls and people coming and participating in the caregiver support group are sad, really sad.
So you also have office hours for Senator Goby and Representative?
Oh, we do.
Ferguson for, once a month, for people that want to be there, that want to, want to talk to a representative or something, correct?
And we thought, I mean, they can help a lot too, with people applying for Medicaid, say, and that has to happen a lot of times, if somebody has to go into a facility and they run out of funds, so they would do that, but they are also capable of helping with that.
And just one other question, what's your most popular celebrity bingo caller?
I'm the only one.
Just saying, anyway.
Bingo's growing again. Anybody who would like to volunteer, put a loud voice, they'd love that.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, Town Administrator updates.
Okay, thank you. And since Nancy's here, I do have as my update, ARPA request for the amount of $10,221.46, and that's for the final stages of the kitchen work. That, that looks great, and I can't say enough about it. As you know, the, the labor was donated, all things purchased were purchased at cost. There was a couple of overruns in other items, which I do have a detailed sheet if anybody wants to see it, but, so anyway, I'm looking for, and I don't, I don't know, Nancy, if you want to add to this, but I'm out of ARPA, $10,221.46 to finish this out.
Did you have any?
Leah?
Go ahead.
No, no, if Nancy can have explanations, that's totally fine. I just have a question, comments, something.
I just want to say the kitchen's been a great asset. It, it looks, I mean, the kitchen space is, the area, the usable space is larger, the actual space is the same size. We just moved out the little galley kitchen and made it into a much bigger, more functional kitchen. It's kind of in between a residential and a commercial kitchen because it has some commercial appliances, but isn't really the standard commercial kitchen there, or it would probably be twice the size with everything in stainless steel. But it's been a huge asset for the people with the meals, for running these extra lunches. We're starting to cook stuff, cook stuff, cook food that isn't necessarily brought in. Our Meals on Wheels are brought in prepared by Elder Services from a caterer, okay? So they come in, they're heated, they're packaged, they're sent out, or they're served in-house. We're starting to do more to utilize the kitchen to actually prepare different meals. Like we have a soup day coming up at the end of this month. We hope to work with Overlook on some of those vegetables and herbs that I told you about, to use that, to get more people to come in. Because we're seeing a few people that, you know, they've had a loss, or they've had an illness, or both, and they can come in every day again, which is nice.
Leah, you had a question or?
Yeah, I guess I, I'm struggling a little bit with this. It's probably not a surprise. I think originally when the work was presented to us by a former chair a number of years ago, it was presented as everything was going to be donated. And then it came back that it was the labor that was going to be donated, and thankfully, we had ARPA funds that had arisen, or care, I can't remember if it's cares or ARPA, that we had allocated $30,000 to go towards the kitchen upgrade. And now the project is complete and we're over by $10,000. And I guess I'm struggling with where's the, the, if we didn't have ARPA, where would this money be coming from? And where is the accountability and project oversight that this is $10,000? That's a huge hit to, to anybody's budget, and we hear that, you know, the buildings are deteriorating, like the actual buildings themselves, not the interior space. And we know that a lot of the spaces aren't necessarily handicap accessible or really as welcoming as they could be to serve the entire public. And now I kind of feel like this was, we've been hoodwinked twice now that this was originally supposed to be all in kind donation out of the goodness of everyone's heart, and now it's been $30,000 plus another, you know, $10,000 plus dollars for an interior space that serves a very much needed population, but still a, a portion of the entire town and not the accessibility of the entire town as a whole. So that's where I'm struggling, that surprised we need $10,000 more. And how, how, where's, where's the oversight for that?
Just one comment, and I can't answer all those questions, but I can answer some of it. I was never aware that it was all donated from the very beginning, when Chief Knight came in and Rich Stevens, the Board Health Director, and Superintendent or Director of DPW, Joe Buckley, that was all part of the CARES Act, that $30,000. It was never going to be all donations that I'm aware of. It was just, it was that initial budget coming from the CARES Act. And after that, I'm not quite sure what happened, but.
Well, obviously, the other things, not to interrupt you, Nancy, other things, obviously, we had to, we had to pay for people aren't going to donate.
Right, they're never, that's why the $30,000.
So that the donated part of it was actually the labor. Everything else you were able to purchase or they were able to purchase at cost.
Right. Except appliances, those were normal.
Right, that you, yeah, okay. But initially, Leah, it was $30,000, you're right, and it came from the CARES Act. The initial bill or invoice for everything that was put in was $14,105. The balance of roughly $16,000 was used for the appliances and appurtenances, so on and so forth. But the other, the other items that I do have listed here, and I can certainly show it to you tomorrow morning or, or, or leave it for you, but I'll. morning or leave it for you, but I'll be there. But anyway, those things came to a total of $10,221.
So I guess then who is responsible for oversight on a project like this? I mean, I have, at this point, I have zero confidence in any of the work being done in town by any groups now. You know, I know that I think last year, the library was taken to task because they had an elevator that needed to be fixed because it's probably the building that requires it. And they were taken to task and I think that was a $2,000 to $5,000 spend. And so I guess where's the oversight on a project like this that now I feel like it's, we're just handing out money? And I'm really struggling with that, I guess.
And that's understood. And I do understand that. Fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, this was, this project was started, obviously, it didn't need a rehab or remodel, but it was started by two town administrators ago and an ex-member of the board. So I wasn't here for that, but actually just come in and we're trying to sew up the edges and get it taken care of.
I mean, I think that some could be expected considering maybe some of those supplies either were ordered or came in after COVID. I don't know. I think with any project, you might expect some increase in the original goal. How much?
I agree. And it certainly wasn't under your control, nor those that approved it prior to the sitting board and myself. So we all come in at the tail end and just trying to, like I say, sew it up. And to answer your other question, Leah, if it wasn't available out of ARPA, the only place we'd be able to get it is to transfer for free cash right now at this point.
Randy, you have a name and address, please.
Randy Jordan, 51 Muscat Park Road. I think it's a great job what's happened and everything's going in the right direction, right? So don't take it in any negative way. But an example of something that recently happened with Overlook would be economy and things was like the ambulance. Correct me if I'm wrong, there was a grant for the ambulance. They didn't buy the ambulance and say, hey, we're $65,000 over. Where is the money coming from, right? So you knew you were over potential funds before you spent it, right?
No.
Okay.
Because I personally wouldn't have spent it. I was too dependent with that.
Okay, okay. But what I'm saying is typically, if you're going to buy an appliance and you've got $10,000 to buy appliances.
Change under the circumstances with all the CARES Act when the limit was lifted to $50,000, it still had to be prevailing wage if that were the case?
Yeah, if the labor's over, but I want to say not having that full, or pardon me, regarding that. If the labor's over $1,000, then it has to be put up a bit.
But it was different. It was a $50,000 ceiling for certain projects at that time.
For a complete project, yeah, yes.
So I mean, I'm just guessing, but I'm assuming it's the subcontractors that put this over that wasn't included in the original.
Which kind of went if it took more time, like I said. I mean, if this kitchen came out beautiful, the contractors were, you know, very good to us. I'm not saying any of that, but I don't, I don't know exactly where this communication was.
Randy?
So assume we have to pay this, right? You take the money out of the $10,000. Obligated where there's some money to do that, to do, open it up to more of the senior center or the community center. You know what I'm asking? You know, do you have to walk a fine line there where you're, you've got a grant to do some of it, now you're going to take it out of ARPA money, which is town money worldwide? So what's saying that a town resident couldn't go up there and say, hey, I want to use your certified kitchen?
Because you're asking for it for a purpose. It's like other things you took out of market for different departments.
Right. Everything we do in town is paid through town funds. It doesn't open it up for free for all for any resident use.
You know, sometimes when you get to APR grounds, they give you funds to do APR grounds. That opens up potentially sometimes for you to walk on my property even though it's not yours. You know what I'm saying? I'm just.
But the initial project was to help with these meals and stuff like that and it just went over. Even those original funds were for increasing the kitchen for the senior, for the meals and stuff like that.
Funds came out of CARES Act, which is also attributed to COVID or ARPA in some sorts. The whole thing was.
Which started the whole initiative.
I do, I do, sir. I just want to make sure you've thought about which pool of money you take it out of if you have.
Well, I think these are all town funds regardless of what pool we take, whether it's out of free cash or if it's out of ARPA, it's still all town funds, right? And even the original funds came out of CARES Act, which were still given to the town.
You know better than I do.
All right. Where do we look at our motion to pay this? Is that what we're looking for? Motion to approve the, Mr. Keller or Mr. Nichols?
Right. I mean, if we're going to pay it through ARPA, then we need a motion and.
I'll make the motion to pay $10,221.46 through ARPA for the senior center's community kitchen. Second?
Any other discussion?
Glock aye.
Galvin aye.
Nichols aye.
White, then no.
All right. Couldn't continue?
Second thing, just a reminder that the regional school district is beginning their budget sessions, their meetings. First one being February 27th, next Monday at 6 o'clock. I believe it's at the high school, but I'll confirm that. That'll be for town administrators, any boards, committees that are interested in going. The second one is slated for March 2nd, which is next Thursday at 7 o'clock, most likely the same location, which I believe they should have a draft budget ready by then. They have told me because of change of administration staff over there, there may be some delay, but that's what I'm hoping for. So that's just a reminder.
So those are at the high school and it's in what room?
I believe it's in the auditorium.
It's in auditorium.
I'm sorry, the media center.
The media center, in part of the library, I guess. And then anybody can go, but only one representative can sit on the, is that true?
So Tuesday's meeting, anybody can go, but they reserve two spots for town representation for each town. And then Thursday's meeting is an actual public hearing.
So one select board member and one finance committee member?
Yes, yeah. Peter O'Malley is going to represent the finance committee.
And you said you are going, Leah? Do you want to represent or are you just going or what do you want to do? I don't care either way.
I think historically, it's usually the chair that represents. I am hopefully going. I can't 100% commit at this rate, like rate today.
Okay.
But my intent is to go. So, but yeah, I don't need to sit. I mean, I was going more for information purposes, but I'm happy to sit if I can make it. You know what I mean? If it doesn't work with your schedule or whatever, we can maybe talk offline, but I'm happy to have.
No, I mean, I can make it. I just didn't want to not give you the opportunity because I know you've been, you communicate with the school on behalf of the board.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate it. No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
Okay. The next thing up is I'm sure the board knows that back in June, the town was awarded roughly $263,000 out of the RAP grant, which is Winter Recovery Assistance Program. So just to give you a heads up that we do have, we did get prices for the culvert, the last remaining culvert to be repaired out of those funds, which is on the border of Rutland and Princeton on Wachusett, Wachusett Road.
Street.
Wachusett Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
Yep.
So we did get a low price of that. And again, as all you know, that this, that's been in the offing to be paved for actually quite a few years. It just hasn't happened, but it's important that this culvert gets replaced before paving project begins, once chapter 90 funds become available. So I just wanted to let you know, we're approaching the $200,000 mark and we got 263. So that also took care of line striping, sign damage, storm drainage and appurtenances, if you will. So that's what we're spending that money on. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. There's also in your packet, there's a survey that CM RPC is putting out for recycling and waste. So that is available on the website. So, and they're asking for residents to please take a minute to look at that and fill it out so we can get into them and we can see where we go from here. The other thing, while I already talked about snow and ice deficit, a couple of other small things, if you will, not really small, but we're looking at, we're looking at trying to proceed into the future here. So we're looking for space. We're looking for office space. As you know, the board knows that we have, we did start the application process for movement of dispatch into the annex. So the board actually has to approve that before we complete the application process to make that happen. So currently, as that building sets in the area of the red room, if you will, for lack of a better term, the entire dispatch center can stay in that part and work out of that part while the rest is remodeled. Now, again, this is all free money from state 911 grant. The problem we have with, it's not a problem of moving them there, the problem we have is displacing the office folks in, currently in the annex, and that's why I'm looking for space. So you've got buildings, you've got planning, and you've got Tamika. And from what I understand, you moved me out of town anyways, so that doesn't, that's not important. So I actually went to the, I'm here today, so you know, to meet with the library to see what's available in the other room, but people were on vacation, so I couldn't do that. Actually, we've talked before about the complete remodel and rehab of town hall to accommodate people. We can use the second floor. It's not handicap accessible at this point, but as long as we have a space downstairs where people can meet with us, we can make that happen. So there's a bunch of things that we're looking into. These things to me really have to be done. It opens up some space in the public safety complex, makes it more of a secure building, if you will, per department. So we're looking into that and I just wanted to give you an update on that.
So on the town hall part, Gary, we got plans and everything for an elevator and all that. Is it feasible that they could not do the complete renovations, but at least install the elevator and still be part of the project? And what would that cost?
Well, when I got a price on that too long ago, to even mention, it was just for the elevator alone, it was $250,000. And that was to run up the backside of the building to give us.
I knew that was going to be a huge expense, but that's going to be something that's going to have to be done.
It's going to have to be done.
And that makes the upstairs accessible and more usable. Is that something we want to consider doing and making that space usable and then look at expanding? to consider doing and making that space usable and then look at expanding and doing the rest of the renovations? I mean, that's just a thought because that elevator is going to be the biggest hit. It's going to be the biggest thing-
Legally, you have to have it, right?
Right. Needs to be done. Is that feasible to consider putting an elevator in and then, I mean, I haven't looked at the full plans. It was going to be bumped out the back. Is that the plan at the original?
It was initially, but I don't know. That was, there's, there's three different phases of the sets of plans. I don't know if you've seen, I have them all on my table in the office, but can, to answer your question, yes. Because you're opening up the entire-
I mean, that's something for the board to look at. We talked about the fear of losing some of these funds and doing some of these major projects sooner than later or getting plans or specs or any things that we need, that we know is going to be money that we, we have to get upfront before we can do some of these other things. So, I mean, I can leave that to the board as an agenda item we can put later on. But I think it should be something we should think about because I think making that accessible is going to be important and it's going to be expensive. So it's something we may want to have a discussion about.
And through the chair, is Mike going to come in and present this to us and-
Yes, he has before.
I know, I know it's been a conversation a little bit.
But that's, yeah, that's fine. We can have him in. He can show you what we got because we, you know, it's really important that we, we move this along at least for the approval process of the application for the state.
Right. Because I, I know one time Mike was in here briefly and we talked, you know, getting the most bang for our buck. We talked about maybe moving the communications part of this building if there was space enough, kind of put it all in the same area, you know, if possible. I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, it's, well, I would say the, the back would certainly accommodate. Has the room for that. I mean, we've talked about other, other different locations as well. But the annex, because we do have a set of plans, we thought that that would be the best to keep them centrally located. They're right next to the tower.
And that move is totally covered by outside funds. So there's no expense that we need to worry about as far as moving dispatch into the annex.
That's correct. The only expense we need to worry about is moving those folks that are in the annex now someplace.
Right. Leah, do you have any thoughts on the discussion?
Yeah, no, I, I know we have the plans for the, um, the lift or the elevator for town hall, but I know at one point there had been conversations kind of on the periphery, especially after seeing the expense of, of getting town hall up. Is, you know, do we just raise it and build new? That is more in line with kind of the needs of the growing town and not trying to retrofit, um, the building. It's not historic. It was built in the 40s, I believe. So I know that there's, there's nice pieces of the building that could potentially be saved. I don't know if that's a larger conversation that's been considered, if it's that, um, that the building was going to just stay and we were going to kind of piece me on and put people in or how much conversation is available for that.
I mean, do you think it's, it's worth ripping that building down and building on the same site or building in an alternative site, a new building for town hall?
I mean, I think that this is a little bit of a bigger conversation, but I, I think that there's value to considering both options. But what if we maintain, if we maintain that building, what's the plan for it? And, you know, similar to, you know, kind of my, one of my struggles with even the, the, the senior center is there's money set aside for studies that, so we continue to pour a significant amount of money into buildings that, do they really fit the needs of, of town as we are currently as well as where we're going to be? And so I don't have a, a strong thought yet as to whether we would maintain that building and build new or whether we would, you know, basically tear it down, salvage pieces of it. You know, I'm thinking specifically of the sage and everything. And then build new in the, in a similar location. I haven't, I know that that's been kind of one of the periphery conversations after getting feedback that to do a complete rehab of the building, I think, Gary, you probably have the numbers more recently. I think to kind of do it in a like long-term sustainable manner was upwards, well over a million dollars.
Yeah, I think that, yeah. The low, the low, the low price that we have for the different schematics was roughly 1.8. And it went up to a higher price. Again, these are nothing, nothing to do with raising the building, but just a complete remodel rehab and a higher price.
Right, right.
I would say it was 3.9.
Right. And so I guess my, I think some of the conversation, and then I think COVID hit and everything was kind of tabled with if we're spending potentially, you know, $2 to $4 million, and this was quotes from a few years ago, so that cost assumption has only gone up, um, in trying to retrofit a building, what, what would the expense be? And is there value to considering a new building entirely that has larger office space, more or more office space, or just a better layout or, or something that is more designed to the, the growing Rutland population that we have now than, than a building from the 1940s?
All right. Well, I think, I think we'll table it to the next meeting and then we all should kind of think about like what our plans are as far as the funds we currently have and what the best use will be and, you know, just continue this conversation at our next meeting. And because I do think we need to take some actions sooner than later. So if everybody can kind of just think about the discussion and we'll just discuss it further at the next meeting, if that's okay.
Okay. One more thing. We are in the process, we have pretty much a, a set in stone date for the food truck festival, which we're planning on or hoping to have on July 29th. What the plan is this year is to have it at Naquadah in the front parking lot with the food trucks and trying to open it up for vendors, craft fair, so on and so forth, with the remaining grassy area in front of the school and also across the street on the town common. The problem we're running into is we really have no one at this point that can jump in and help us put this together. And we want it to be a success. So actually, I talked to Tamika today. We're going to reach out to nonprofits and see if there's an interest for, for craft fair from, from locals. And then they would have to give, we'd have to get a count on them. And then I would just have to go out and divvy up the space square footage wise. The same gentleman that ran the food truck festival, which, which was a success last year, will be in charge of the food truck part of it. We will have police details because we'll have it on two sides of the street. And even if not, we have the police details. We will have the trash taken care of and we will have the port of parties taken care of for the event. So just actually, if anybody from the public is looking and interested, we're looking for people to help with the setup, if you will, to get local vendors, craft fair people on board with this. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be busy. It's March already, so there's a lot to do in a little bit of time. So we're working on that. And to elaborate on it a little bit, the reason we're not having it, or plan on, you know, I'll say not having it at Memorial is because of the construction. We're not going to be a lot of parking available because of the tip project on Palmigusset Road. We've also considered or talked about having it at the Heights, but as you know, that, that deal is, is set and done and the shovels will be in the ground. So there's really no room to do it up there either. So I still have to talk with facilities manager and the principal of Naquadah to make sure there's no conflicts. But that's where we are with that. So more to follow.
Okay. Name and address?
Nancy Nichols, five busy day. Just a question. Is that, was that a moneymaker for the town?
No.
Why isn't it? Why are we hoping?
Well, we're trying to get everything set up better for next year, Nancy. Obviously, when I first came to town and that, that thing was already in full swing and all planned. I talked to planning. I believe I talked to the board. It'd be nice to reap some of that benefit because we have an outside person who lined it up, if you will. They take care of the food trucks. They take care of that. But I really, like firmly believe that if the town took that whole thing over, we can reap some of that benefit and, and set our own rules.
I believe the only benefit was for the fire brigade head of Beer Garden. Did they, did they make out decently on that? Do you know?
Not last year.
Well, they didn't last year?
I don't think they even had one, right?
For a few.
Oh, I didn't know they didn't do it last year.
They did have one last year. It's just the layout last year was not as amenable as it was the year before. Um, if I may, I think one of the values having, um, an outside entity take over with it is, as Gary you've alluded to, finding volunteers to step up and do the work is, is tricky. And as we have seen throughout some of the ongoing committees, finding volunteers that, that last throughout the entire entirety of the project are tricky as well. And so while it's not a moneymaker, there's no expense to the town. You know, Mark from the food truck, the food truck consortium takes care of all the trash and removal and, um, you know, the trucks make sure they have all the permitting necessary for Board of Health and everything. So there's a lot that, that the town's not investing into it by having someone do it. So, um, you know, I kind of look at it as it's a fun event for the community as a whole and no pressure or very limited pressure on the town to, to do it and add to already overworked people or, um, uh, people that aren't necessarily capable of maintaining the duration of the project. So that's just my, my kind of different view of things.
Who pays for the details?
Excuse me?
Who pays for the details?
They do.
Who's they?
They, the Mark Alon.
The one that ran the food truck?
Oh, okay.
They, they paid for all the expenses.
Details, port of parties, trash.
Now, you were talking about having it at the schools and then is something on the common as well? Or just at the schools?
There'll be room across the street on the common if we have. It depends on, on the response from, from vendors, for craft fair people, locals, nonprofits.
Okay. So that's what I was wondering. Have we almost kind of have like the food truck festival at the school and then individual thing in the center?
Yeah, because that grassy area between the teachers parking lot, if you will, in front of the school and Main Street. There's a pretty wide level grassy area, but if we, if we had more-
But the common would give the opportunity for other vendors outside of the food trucks.
Plus you've got the fire brigade building there that we've talked about opening up for tours and so on and so forth to try to make it a complete downtown event.
And through the chair, didn't we discuss, Gary, putting all the Rutland businesses on the common?
Right.
Out front, right?
Yeah.
The closest to the, and all the others down the, that's what it is? Down the, okay.
Yeah. We, we feel that the loop, if you will, in front of the building can accommodate the same amount of food trucks that you had last year. So you don't have to go way down back.
Way back, yeah.
You want everything for Rutland, obviously, and then two, two grassy areas.
If I may, I was just going to add for anybody that's listening. I created a form that we put on the town's website today and we email blasted it out to folks so that if they are interested, we'll have an organized list of who's looking, what type of participant they're going to be so that we can better plan, you know, what we're going to need. Because I know in the past, it's typically just been crafters, but we wanted to expand that to, to other folks as well. And that can even be local food truck vendors that maybe weren't part of that food truck consortium and so didn't get to participate last year. I actually already had a couple today that were new, but were Rutland specific food trucks that would like to participate. So we're hoping that way that we'll reach more people and it'll be more organized.
Great. Yeah, I did see that from her on Facebook. All right, thanks. All right. Anybody have anything else? Or you have anything?
I do.
Oh, geez.
I know you're waiting. Oh, no, she's not home making lasagna, so you're good. The last thing we, Tamika and I, again, I'm trying to line this up and get it going really without direction. We're kind of just stabbing at the dark as the concerts on the common. Now, last year you had one every Friday, but we're talking to folks that we've talked to, people who are probably looking at two a month instead of every week. You got that gazebo that's, that's pretty much complete, able to use now. We don't know really much about it, who lined up the bands, where they got the information, how much for them, so on and so forth. So we are working on that and obviously more to follow. We, I believe, is it the next meeting, Tamika, that the three hundred that's coming on for their closeout?
Yeah.
Been talking to Becky to see if there's anything left in the gift fund that we can move over to use for the concerts on the common. So that's, that's a process that we have to look into.
And we still look for sponsors? I know we had band sponsors from businesses.
Look for sponsors, yeah. We've already, already had one in this morning, actually, that was interested in sponsoring a band. But we just, we just need the contact for information. So again, if anybody can help, please contact my office so we can, we know where to start and, and reach out to these folks. That's all I got, sir.
That's it. All right. Moving on to new business. So Capital Strategic Solutions, this is a grant organization that can provide support to the town in applying for grants, for municipal grants. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. If you'd, if you'd like to just introduce yourselves and thank you for coming.
Sure. Thank you for having us. My name's Nicole Figueroa. I'm the CEO of Capital Strategic Solutions. We are Massachusetts-based certified woman-owned business comprised of former municipal employees. And we work with communities across New England, helping them kind of solve their problems, looking for funding sources, public management, community outreach, and a whole lot of other things. Then I'm going to let Blythe Robinson and Jennifer Thompson take it from there.
I don't know if anybody's speaking, but we can't hear you if you are.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Both unview and share my screen at the same time. It's not good. So thank you so much for having us. I'm Jen Thompson and we're partners with Capital Strategic Solutions. And we have a very quick PowerPoint just to tell you a little bit about ourselves and what we do. As Nicole mentioned, we're a certified woman-owned business in Massachusetts. We're based out of Marlboro. We provide a lot of assistance to cities and towns. Most of us on staff are former municipal employees and have worked in the private sector, I mean, in the public sector, I don't know, the majority of my career, and I know Blythe and Nicole are the same. And we provide resources to cities and towns when they need it the most. We come in and we help and then we leave. And we don't have to pay our benefits or retirement. We go on our merry way. So, so we offer a lot of different services, but I think, you know, tonight we're going to talk specifically about grant services, which is something we have done a lot with, especially the last two years, I would say. So as I mentioned, we're made up primarily of municipal, former municipal employees. We all live locally in Massachusetts, so the town of Rutland is not difficult for any of us to get to. We can be there in person. We can be there remotely as we are tonight. And again, we offer on-call services, so you don't need to sign a big contract with us. We're here as you need us, for as much as you need us, or as little as you need us. Again, it's completely at your discretion and your direction. You know, Blythe and I were both town managers in, in our previous lives, so we understand the constraints that you're under in terms of funding and budgeting. So we get that. So that's why we kind of offer an on-call. And every town is a little bit different and some towns need us more than others and some just need us a little bit. So we do do a lot of contract work right now for grant writing and management. As I mentioned, we do a lot of municipal type services. But Blythe and I in particular have been doing quite a bit of grant writing and management work. We've done that in some of our previous positions. And then I think the last few years with CARES and FEMA, ARPA, and now the infrastructure money, cities and towns, a lot of our clients just didn't have the resources or their staff to kind of manage all this, you know, money that's being funneled, which is great. But, you know, I think it really, we start with CARES in particular, when the rules kind of kept changing and some of our towns were struggling to just keep doing their day-to-day and still manage all the CARES funding and FEMA funding at the same time. So we came in and we helped a lot of towns with their CARES money, with their FEMA money, with their ARPA planning, with their ARPA reporting. And then that's, a lot of the towns, the cities and towns have kept us on to do grant work. So we'll help research grants, we'll help write grants, we'll help ensure the grants, we'll help with, and I think Blythe will talk a little bit more about the types of grants that we've done recently and the types of grants we've done without, you know, through our experience. So this is just a list of the cities and towns that we've worked on for grant writing and management the last few years. And many of them are still our clients now and we still help them with funding opportunities. I won't read them off you, but you get it. We, we like to do cities and towns of all sizes. So we have towns that are very small, like Berniston and Oakham, and then we have the city of Lynn. And then we have everything kind of in between. So like I said, the, the needs are different in every community and, and we help them as needed. And I'll hand it over to Blythe.
Thank you, Jen, and hello, everybody. It's been interesting listening to your meeting tonight. I managed in both Upton and Norfolk, which are similar- meeting tonight. I managed in both Upton and Norfolk, which are similar in size to Rutland, and some of your struggles are very familiar and can really appreciate what you're working through. So here is a, by no means a complete list of various state municipal programs that we, Jen and I especially, have been involved in either as managers or in assisting communities. And some of them, you've already taken advantage of, for instance, you talked tonight about using some of your ARPA funds. Jen is our guru on that. I think we have at least, gosh, at least 25 towns that we help with that. There might be more. It keeps growing by the week. You know, I looked at your website. Sounds like you've already come a green community. Congratulations. You have a municipal vulnerability profile plan in place. So you've already been doing some of the work. But that leads you to other opportunities. And so, for instance, the municipal vulnerability program grant is about to come out, and you may be in the perfect position to apply for that. And ARPA is a, you know, once in not a lifetime, but certainly once a very long while type of opportunity. It gives you a chance to apply for grants and use those sorts of funds to match it and make your dollars stretch further. And you really get excited about helping communities figure out what is the programs they should apply for, and maybe some that, you know, we suggest they don't for whatever reason, working through that with them and helping them be successful in finding them. So you can produce the list on your own, but these are just some of them. We also monitor all of the grants, state lists out every week, and advise our communities on which ones are about to come out so that people can be ready to apply when the opportunity strikes. Jen, could you go to the next slide? And so here, we'll just get into the range of services a little bit more. As Jen mentioned, technical writing. We would want to sit down with you initially and kind of understand what your priorities are and what types of programs you've heard about and think might be a fit for Rutland. And then we can also bring you ideas of things that you might want to apply for that could work, whether they're state or federal. We've had success in public areas, and Jen mentioned Burgeston. Using their ARPA funds, we matched a state grant to improve a veterans memorial park. They just won. And through the USDA, matched some funds to get police and fire repeaters in their various vehicles, which was a huge win for that community a bit further west from you. We can help you plan for a future project. You know, you talked about some of this, what you're doing, looking at your space and your buildings. We can help you with that. And we'll look at grants that might be able to be sought after to make those things, those projects happen. If you award a grant, if you need some help, we can assist you with the reporting and the management of them, because some of them take a lot of follow-up work and perhaps even quarterly reporting to make sure you're on track. That's something we can do. Another cornerstone of our business is community engagement and public outreach. Some grants will require that, and we, that's Nicole's area of expertise. In fact, we helped your neighbor next door in Holden with community engagement and outreach to get a TIP project over the finish line that needed a vote at town meeting and had failed the first time that they tried it. So that's an example. And then lastly, we have relationships with several engineering firms and other firms. If you need some specialized help with something, we can help coordinate with you folks who might be able to come in and work with you if you don't have that particular resource already in your suite of expertise. And then, as Jen mentioned, and I just wanted to mention again, you know, we don't, this doesn't need to cost a lot. Matter of fact, we've all been in your shoes, especially in small communities where every dollar makes a huge difference. We look forward to being able to help the community achieve its goals in a cost-effective way and then step away or come back again if you need us for something else. And we really try to be an extension of you, your staff, without being full-time in your offices. So that is our overall presentation, and we would love to hear any questions that you may have.
Could you explain to us, like, how the cost is worked? And like, are you available? And then if there's a grant available, then we pay for the, just how the pay structure works as far as your services?
Sure. So we offer an hourly on-call contract. And so if there's a funding opportunity that we identify that we think might be a good fit for Rutland, we'll shoot an email to, you know, your town administrator or whoever's handling it, and say, is this something you want us to go after? And then if we do, that's where we would get paid for work to do the grant work. Obviously, if you want to pay us to do a certain amount of research to find grants, that's available as well. So some towns will say, you know, we want you to do five hours a month or 10 hours a month, or they'll set a not-to-exceed amount. And we want you to aggressively be looking for grants for us. So those are kind of the two different models. Sometimes the city or town will come across a grant opportunity or they'll hear that one's coming. State rep or your state senator might know of one, and you'll reach out to us. So it works both ways. And you'll say, hey, Blythe, you know, we heard that this is coming down the pike. Can you help us with this? Or, you know, our DPW director was at a conference and they talked about this grant. Is that something you could look into? So it's both ways. Either we'll hear about the grant or you hear about the grant, and then the town makes a decision if you want us to kind of go after it. And you pay us the hourly fee to write and put the grant in, submit it. And again, if you want us to do the reporting, some towns prefer to do the reporting themselves. Sometimes don't have those resources, so they'll ask us to report to the agency for them. Some towns need help with procurement, especially if there's federal procurement requirements if you're going for a federal grant. Again, so it's completely at your discretion in terms of how much you use us and how much you spend, and it's just an hourly fee with everything built in. There's no extra costs.
So on an average, what would an average grant cost for you to apply for typically for some of the grants you've done for the communities?
So I think it depends on the size of the grant. So say, for example, you wanted to do a very simple grant, like a community compact or one of the similar state grants, you know, you're probably looking at $1,000 or something like that. If there's a really large federal grant, like say you were going for a $4 million or, you know, $5 million road project through the Rays, which is a big federal grant, there's a huge benefit cost analysis that has to be done. So it's just a lot of hours there. A grant like that, you know, could take us 30 hours to complete. And then there's a lot more that I would say are, those are kind of the two extremes, right? So, you know, your MVP grant, if you want to go for an action grant, that's probably going to require some meetings and some community outreach. So that'll add a little bit of time if you want to go for something like that. But I think it depends on the particular grant. And Blythe, you can feel free to jump in because you've done some recently too. You probably have a good sense of how much time you've spent on them.
I think it's a perfect answer. It depends on how much your staff, maybe if your public works director, for example, or planning director is able to follow up on some of the aspects of it. And for instance, the MVP grant, you need to have a plan of what you're going to want to accomplish that matches up with your goals, your plan. If somebody in Rutland can go out and look for services that will actually undertake that project, we can work with them, and that's less work that we need to do. So it depends on each situation, and every community's got strengths and weaknesses, and we can fill in where's necessary.
So as far as the administering of the grant or oversight of the grant, can that sometimes be written into the grant so that you actually get funding to administer it as well through that grant?
Yes. Yeah, a lot of the grants allow you to add administrative costs. So if the town wants us to do that, we can include that in the grant application.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
That's what I was, that last question was what I was thinking, working into it, yeah.
Now, as far as, you said that you could let us know if grants are becoming available. Do we have to, like, engage in some kind of contract, or you just let us know and it's case by case? Or how do we develop a relationship, you know, going forward if that's something that we wanted to look into?
So you would become one of our clients and we would sign an on-call agreement with you. And then if a grant opportunity comes up, or we're just going to send you an email saying, hey, here's an opportunity. Are you interested? Because we'll be sending it to, you know, any city or town that's under contract with us. It's not going to cost you anything to get that email from us. And then you'll give us the green light, yes or no. You want me to look into it? You want to meet and talk about it? Or, you know, so if you decide that it's something you want us to look at, then you would pay us to do that. But just us sending you an email and a heads up that something's there isn't going to cost you anything.
And I, I'm sorry. So I assume, I assume if you tell us that there's a grant available, you'd be able to give us an estimate of what you would estimate the cost to be for that particular grant, correct?
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely. Sometimes it'll take a little discussion. So for example, we'll need to know the components of the grant, how much of it the town can do on its own. Like Blythe said, there may be some things that you can do internally that we're not going to have to do for you, which will save you money. So that'll, but we're certainly able to give you an estimate of how much time it'll take for us to do it for you.
Great. Leah, did you have any questions or?
Yeah, I had a quick question, I guess. So as an on-call consultant, is there any concern, I, we considered like a regionalized grant coordinator, manager, something. But then obviously, sometimes at small communities, we may compete against ourselves. So how, like, with a firm such as yourself, how does that play into the, your availability to us and potentially other communities that you represent that are also applying for the exact same opportunities?
So do you mean in terms of regional opportunities or the competitiveness of it?
The competitiveness of it, like, yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting. We do get asked, I've gotten asked that a few times. So we haven't really run into any sort of conflicts in terms of, hey, we're helping this town with it. Does that mean we're not going to be able to help this town, or they're not going to get it? And that may just be simply because there's enough to go around. But I also think not all of our communities are all going for the same things. They're very, some of them are very different and are looking for very different things. So, for example, some of the grants that Blythe just talked about in Berniston, they were the only ones that were interested in going for those particular grants. You know, and some of that, I think, is because location and the state, some of it's population, some of it's just the needs of the community. So we haven't found any conflicts in terms of, you know, one community wanting something and us having multiple communities wanting the same thing. So MVP's probably a really good example. I think the state is funneling a lot of their ARPA money through the MVP, and they want to give that money to the community. So we're not kind of running up against it being so competitive that people aren't getting funded. If anything, I think they're trying to get the funding out, and a lot of communities need help getting it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming and presenting, and I'm sure we'll be in touch.
Nice to meet you all. Thanks so, so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Bye.
So obviously, you know, there's been a lot of talk about we need grant writers, we need all different types of resources. We're obviously not going to get all that in one, in a town administrator, and I'm just trying to find other outside resources. And, you know, if we take advantage of it, we take advantage of it. Another resource is that, you know, Nancy had talked about community aggregate a while ago. This is for the residential electric getting breaks. She did talk to Lucas from Senator Goby's office, and he has given us a contact that Gary and I can meet with them and find out what's available for residents to try to work on some of the electrical, the electric costs under that program as well. I also noticed that there was a, Central Mass Regional Planning has some municipal finance services that, looking at consultants that may be able to provide us with some financial consulting opportunities that I'm looking into. And I'm going to continue to bring, you know, resources like this to the board, and it'll be up to the board and the town administrator to whether we take advantage of that. I have brought resources to the town before that never went anywhere, but I'll continue to bring them. And if we want to save money, we'll take advantage of them. And like I said, at least it's available.
Yeah.
And speaking of resources, thank you very much for waiting, Jay. We have a resident that is a retired professor at Worcester State University, and I actually worked with her in the past with internships. And she's not the guru necessarily, but she understands internships and the advantages and some of the ways that we may be able to look into that. We've had discussions about that. So I asked Jay if she would, wouldn't mind coming and just talking to us a little bit about what she knows and how we might be able to kick off trying to get some internships in town. So Jay Mahoney.
Thank you. My name is Jay, or Joe Mahoney, and I live at 14 Lizzie Lane in town. Again, I'm not a guru, but I've got 30 years' experience. So I'm just going to tell you what resources are available to you. Most of the universities in this area offer internships for college credit. And those internships allow them to get hands-on experience in the field that they think they might want to go in. They may do an internship and decide, I never want to do this again a day in my life. But for the most part, they have it fairly well figured out what it is that they want to do. Internships are offered across all of the universities here, and most of the universities say internships can only be taken in their junior and senior year. So it's not, you know, last year's freshman, last year's senior from high school that's coming in to help you. Internships are usually offered in increments of three credits. You can do a one-credit, a two-credit if it's just a really quick internship. But they're usually offered in increments of three credits. So that's 126 hours that they will do for you. And 126 hours, you know, is 20 hours a week for six or seven or eight weeks, or 15, or however many you want to put in there. And the internships can be in a multitude of different disciplines. So if you have a town accountant, and that town accountant desperately needs some help, well, there's probably an intern out there who's looking for some municipal accounting opportunities. Municipal accounting is a backroad into your CPA. And so not everybody who graduates from accounting programs are going to go to a traditional CPA firm. They may choose to go the backroad into your CPA program. So if you want to develop relationships with the colleges that offer accounting, then it's probably a wise thing to do. You get to choose the type of student that you want. You write an internship description. You write the qualifications. I actually brought a couple. This is a very basic one from the city of Boston, actually, in the mayor's internship program. So you can see basically what they've done. There's nothing, there's nothing in content on this particular internship. They left themselves wide open so that they can choose the people they need at the time that they need it. This talks about basic qualifications. This talks about basic skill levels that they need and those kinds of things. And you could have something, kind of a boilerplate that you have as well. So whether you need someone in the DPW or the council and agent, whether you need someone in the accounting's office, whether you need someone to run the audiovisual component someplace, or if you need someone to shadow an outside vendor who's setting up a food truck, you know, you choose someone to go do that, and then they write it all down and they document it for you. And now you've got a handbook on how to do that in the future, who all your contact people is. So if it's event planning, there's a lot of marketing students out there. There's a lot of other people. If it's someone on the board of health that needs an intern to help them gather information, to do some research. So it can be hands-on field-type work, or it can be research-type work, or if possible, it could be clinical work as well. We had a wonderful COVID clinic right downstairs here. It could have been, hopefully, we'll never have another one, but it could be field-type work as well. These can cost you nothing, or they can cost you $15 an hour. And if I'm going to make a recommendation, I'm going to say you're going to get more than your $15 an hour. If you offer an internship that does not pay, you limit the pool of applicants significantly, because everybody needs interns now, and almost everybody pays now. So it's not free for you. You know, it's not free for the town. And if you look at it, it's just free labor. You're not going to get the best and the brightest interns, you know, to come. And you want the best and the brightest interns, and they want to be here. And you want the best and the brightest interns, and they want to be here. An internship is a partnership with three parties. Certainly, the town, or the company that's hiring that intern, with the university who is supplying that intern, and with the intern themselves. There are other parties involved. There will be a professor who is their direct academic supervisor, and there will be a member of their company or the town who is their practicum or their internship supervisor. So, you really have to think long and hard about what it is that you want, what it is you can provide in terms of real-life experience for these people, and who it is that you want to bring on board. Everybody has to be on board for this to be successful. The colleges and universities in this area have been doing this for a long time. They can guide you through this. They can actually walk you right through how to write the internship job description, how to post it, where the best places are to post it, how to supervise an intern. If you want contacts at Worcester State, I can help you with that. You know, your contacts at other places, you really are on your own, you know, to make your contacts there other places. But I think that, given the brain power in central Massachusetts, and given the eagerness of these kids to, you know, get hands-on experience, it would be wise for you guys to think about taking advantage of this particular opportunity. I know we have the president of Rutland Little League, or is it called Rutland Baseball?
The Rutland Little League.
About 12 or 15, no, it's probably 15, at least 15 years ago. I don't know if you know their names, but Kevin Mailman and Frank Chikoro.
Okay, we've done that, yeah.
Were running the organization at the time. They came to us, and we provided them with a couple of interns, and they wrote a parent handbook for you. So, it isn't just the town, it's also organizations within the town that could, that could use, you know, this kind of thing. So, I just wanted to bring, bring it up, that there was this wonderful resource, that there are a lot of kids looking for opportunities, and I think the town could use some of their energy and their enthusiasm. Can I answer any questions?
I have one, if I may, to the chair. Is there a list of, thank you very much, interesting, is there a list of specific disciplines? Or are there specific contact persons or departments at these universities? And how do we get across? Do you send us something, or do you have something, or do they have something available that shows specific disciplines? Or do we just reach out and say, hey, I'm looking for somebody to help with stormwater?
Okay. So, there is generally one place that you can go in all colleges and universities, and that's the Career Services slash Internship Office. So, there is an office designed specifically for that at all universities. And as I said before, they've been doing it for a long time, so they know exactly what they're doing. In terms of the disciplines, you can go online, and you can just look at academic courses often, but you don't need to do that. You can say, I'm really looking for somebody to handle rainwater issues. And they'll say, oh, I think you want our earth sciences, or I think you want our environmental engineering. So, the different colleges have different disciplines. And you are only limited by your imagination, because even if they don't offer that particular discipline, there's always those students who are interested in more than one thing and might be willing to jump at a unique opportunity like that. They'll put you in touch with the appropriate person, the appropriate faculty member, and then you can talk to the faculty member about either writing up a job description, or if they have anybody in mind who might fit that job description. So, and I am going to give you an example aside from the, who wrote the handbook. I don't know if you're still using that handbook.
You might be.
Or not. But about 10 years ago, eight years ago maybe, I had a student from here in Rutland, actually, who was an accounting major, but he didn't think he wanted to be an accountant. And he wanted to work hands-on. He wanted to work with machinery, and he wanted to work hands-on. So, I hooked him up with Paxton DPW, and the Paxton, the gentleman at Paxton DPW had him shadow for a while, and he started talking about all this equipment that was hanging around, and they really didn't have a complete list of all the equipment that was hanging around in the DPW. I mean, they had half of the lawnmower somewhere, and they had other pieces. And so, this young man did a complete inventory for the town of Paxton. He inventoried all of their equipment. And he had the benefit of being an accounting major, so he talked to them about depreciation and about how much money they had sitting there that they hadn't taken off the books or that they might be able to use someplace. And it turned out to be an excellent internship. Not at all what we wrote up in the beginning, but an excellent internship. And when he graduated, when this young man from Rutland graduated, he applied for some jobs that were in fleet management. We don't usually, we don't have a fleet management discipline at Worcester State. And he got a couple of great offers, and he's still in the fleet management field, only now he's the director of fleet management for a large company, a large multi-state company. And that all started with Paxton DPW. And they had never had an intern before, by the way. So, any other questions? I have any answer for you?
It's another good thing to look into.
Leah, do you have any questions? Or? Leah, here on you, there you go.
Sorry, my phone was like freaking out. No, I don't have any questions. I appreciate you coming in, Dr. Mahoney. It's really interesting to hear from the perspective of someone on the other side of it, how it works. So, thank you. And thank you, Lyndon, for making these connections, both with the Capital Street Exclusions and here also. Thank you.
Now, I had talked to Jay about maybe consulting with us to at least kickstart this off, because Tom and I are on, one of our subcommittees was on staffing, and we had talked about internships. So, maybe at some point, we could make a connection and maybe try to connect with Worcester State as a sample test case of.
Sure.
Setting up some internships.
He knows where I live.
All right. Any other things? All right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
All right.
I do want to give you this. This is just a page from the Worcester State thing. It just talks about the different kinds of internships too, so I'll hand that out to you.
Actually, can you hand both of these to Tamika so we can all get covered? Thank you so much. I would, but I'd have to climb over the table to get to us. Thanks again. All right. Rutland Little League, discussion of porta potties and field use.
To the chair, I'll just give a brief why we're here for people that don't know. About six, seven months ago, maybe, Tamika, is when this conversation started. I don't even know why it started, but it came up about the issue, for lack of a better way of saying it, at the porta potty at Memorial Field. Myself and Carol thought we'd call around, get some prices, try and figure out what the cost would be. Basically, I, we reached out to, the most affordable one seemed to be a company called Pleasant View Potties. Their cost was $100 for every 28 days, and that included, he called it pumping and cleaning once a week. So, they'd come out. We figured the porta potty needs to be there if Mother Nature behaves, would be March through November, could be October, could be April, whenever, like I said, Mother Nature lets us get out there. We came up with a number of roughly $900. It was our idea to reach out to the leagues, which is basically, unless somebody can correct me, the only ones that basically use that league is Rutland Soccer, Rutland Little League and softball, and the town for summer camp, really. So, we figured $300 apiece. I talked to Jonathan Miller, and I talked to Jason DeStratus, who's the president, I think, of.
Jason Pratt is the president of Rutland Soccer.
Oh, he is? I talked to DeStratus, I thought he was, but he made it sound like he was. Anyway, so, he agreed, Rutland Soccer told me, John said he wanted to come in and talk to us. So, basically, it was $300 each. You know, we're scraping a claw for money. I thought it'd be a good opportunity to open up the relationship, work together for a temporary solution as we move toward a permanent solution. Since then, I've talked to the town, the people that use it, and they don't even use the porta potty. It's basically soccer and little league that use that field. Anytime the town uses the field, we supply our own porta potties. Summer Camp utilizes the pool. So, there's really no need for the town itself to put a porta potty on that field. That being said, I think it's still, I think it's a reasonable request to say, split it 300 apiece. Anything goes over the 900, I think the town could eat it. Again, this is anything, isn't anything that's been voted on or agreed upon, it's just I'm trying to work to try and solve this, this temporary issue. So, that's where we're at. The floor is yours, John.
Just one question first of all. How has it been paid in the past?
I don't, has it been you guys full?
We've never paid anything on that.
Yeah, so I don't know. Again, the conversation came up.
Tamika.
So, the porta potty at Memorial Field was donated to our relationship with one of our members of the Port of Health, and the particular company donated it.
Okay.
And then, as you recall, over the summer, we contacted them several times because there was cleaning issues with it.
Right.
And then, one day, they just picked it up and never came back again.
Right.
So, up to this point, it was a donated.
So, it was donated.
Yeah, I know there was some issue of, it was vandalized a couple times, I think, and it was, it was a nightmare, really. It was, I mean, as, as a parent of children that are on that field.
Yeah.
It's better to go in the bushes than in that, than in that porta potty. So, that's, this company said, once a week, they'll come out, they'll clean it, sterilize it, pump it, whatever it is they do.
And we had very good experiences with them, because we also used them for all the events.
For the events, right, right.
And they, we, everybody had.
Right, and he had very good things to say about the town. He said, no, that's great, just let me know, you know, let me know what months you need it and whatever, so. Floor is yours, John.
All right. Yeah.
Sure. So, Jonathan Miller, 27 Brunel Drive, president of Rutland Baseball and Softball. Actually, the reason I'm here is because of the comments of the board at the October 17 meeting. Let me quote, "This aggravates me a little bit. $600 isn't a lot of money, and these leagues get these fields for nothing." They got, it aggravates me that they come back saying, what are you guys doing for us? It rubs me the wrong way. They get these fields for nothing. I mean, give a little.
Well, it wasn't the board, John, I said that.
But you're a member of the board, though, Tom.
Right, I said it.
So, I'm, so I'm going to, I'm going to tell you what we do for the, for the town and what we do for the league. Last year alone, we spent $20,000 fixing up fences on town-owned property.
Right.
Town's not doing that, we're doing that. And those fields get used by people all over town, not necessarily just in our league. There's kids up there playing on those fields, not necessarily baseball, kickball, assorted other things on those fields. We spent $20,000 alone last year.
And that's on Memorial Field?
On all of them. The Central Tree, Na Quag, the Community Center, Memorial.
Well, I have the fields right here.
So, $20,000, so $20,000 we spent just last year. I've been on the Board of Rutland Little League for 10 years. This is my sixth year as the president. In my 10 years, we've spent well north of $120,000 on town-owned property. And so, I think it's really interesting to me that the Board of Selectmen will say, hey, Rutland Little League should give a little.
Who uses the field, John? Who uses the fields?
Go up there any time of day, any weekend, those fields.
But who uses the fields? The work you're putting in? Listen, I told you on the phone, you're number one ally is me, but you're fighting me over $300.
But who is that?
The work is going into the ball field. The ball field is used by Rutland Little League, it's not used by the town.
But if somebody gets hurt on those, who's liable, Tom?
You, you're playing.
We're not.
During the games?
During those games, it's on us, not in those games. Somebody gets hurt on those fields, who is liable for that? The town is liable. We've put up, I'm just going to say, the amount of time and resources that we put into those fields, and it's not just baseball. Every spring, our volunteers go out and they're not just, they're not just fixing up the field, they're cleaning up all the trash on those fields.
Absolutely.
So, for the board to sit here at that October meeting, and you.
Well, the board didn't say it, I said it.
But you represent the board, Tom, so like, it's semantics, but at the end of the day, for the, for the board to sit there and say, for you to sit there and say that, what does the league do for the town? That's frustrating. There would be no middle school baseball or softball program if it weren't for Rutland Little League. Every bit of these fields that is maintained in this town is us, the stone dust, the bases, and it's not just equipment, it's the actual fields.
Okay.
And so, it's frustrating that.
Well, this is so, and there's a lot of people watching that don't know, so this is why, this is why I'm saying this.
I just want to make sure we keep it.
Yeah. So, Central Tree Middle School is utilized, right? We have not, town has nothing to do with that, I mean, as far as utilizing it, the school and little league, that's it, as far as I know, right? Na Quag Elementary School, again, Rutland Little League and softball. Marsh Field, which you only have access to that field.
We privately lease that field.
And Memorial Field.
The money I, the amount of resources I just said that we spent does not include Marsh Field.
Okay. So, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, five fields that are utilized.
Yes.
That you pay nothing for. I'm on the Board of Directors for Waukesha Football. We pay a flat fee every year of $6,000 to utilize muddy pond.
How much, how much do you pay?
$6,000.
Okay, so.
Just to use it.
So, I'll make a deal with you. I'll pay $6,000 to use the fields in Rutland if you'll pay the $120,000 to maintain those fields. Is that, is that a trade-off you're willing to do? Because $60,000 over the last 10 years is a whole lot less than $120,000 plus on those fields, so.
No, this is semantics, because here we go right here. Last year alone, the Galvin household, right? $300 I got you from my union, 150, what was it, 250 for my kids. That's why I pay that money. So, you do to make the fields better.
But that doesn't pay for that, Tom.
What does it pay for?
It pays for the umpires and insurance and all those types of things that go into this.
Right.
That's not paying for, so you mean.
So, the dues aren't going into that?
But your, the registration fees aren't paying for that.
So, how are you getting the money for the, for the $20,000?
Fundraising and sponsorships.
Which, which I contribute.
There's lots of people that contribute.
I know, the town does.
But it's, it's interesting to me that we've got other towns in District, District Four is the little league group that we participate with, District Four, Massachusetts, and it includes the Waukesha Towns, and includes the city of Worcester, Boylston, West Boylston, Clinton, and a couple other towns, all in 20 leagues. The town of Holden just, just voted to approve a $4 million facility, right? The town of Paxton is replacing the lights on their baseball field, the town is. The city of Clinton, the town of Clinton, is paying for, paid for brand-new lights on their fields. And our town is coming to us to pay for, for a porta potty. Do you understand?
Well, wait a second. You've heard this whole meeting. This whole meeting has been about grants, has been about trying to find resources. We're trying to get the money to do these things.
I understand, Tom, but.
But it's about building, for me, it's about building a relationship. It's not about the $300.
Maybe there should have been a relationship before, that the Board of Selectmen just sent us a letter that said, hey, we want you to pay for, for half of the porta potty, send the check to this company. No conversation, no nothing, just, hey, here's a letter, we'd like you to pay this.
Right. And what did I tell you on the phone? I said, you're right. We handled it wrong, and I was man enough to admit that. But now we're here.
But do you see, but do you see the disparity?
Well, I think, I think the point, the point that we need to make.
The question to the Board of Selectmen is, I've, I've been at the board, like I said, I've been on the board for 10 years. I've been living in this town for 19 years now. And one of the things you said at that last meeting, Tom, was, they act like we do nothing. And I would argue, the town does nothing for recreation. Sometimes the fields get mowed, and this is not on Joe Buckley. Joe Buckley does an amazing job with the resources he's got, and I will fight for Joe Buckley all day long. But this isn't about that. about that. This is about, this town has grown significantly in the last 20 years. And yet there are zero new fields in town for sports or recreation. Zero.
Well, I don't know how many meetings you've watched, but I brought that up many times. Recreation gets very little help.
The question is, what is the town doing for it? And that was, my response to the whole thing was, I did not shut it down. I said, I've never said no. I said, "I want a bigger conversation on how recreation is handled in this town."
With who?
And with the Board of Selectmen. My response to Tamika and Gary was, "I want a bigger, there needs to be a bigger conversation."
Absolutely.
And every three to four years, we have these conversations about recreation. And we come out of that meeting and everybody feels excited about where we're going. "Hey, we've got a lot of ideas. We're gonna do something." And we do nothing for three or four years until somebody throws a fit and there's another conversation about it.
Well, I agree with you, but I can't, I can't control what they talked about five years ago.
This is, it's, it's getting to be ridiculous. But, but for, for a Board of Selectmen, a member of the Board of Selectmen, to sit on there and say, "What does the league do for us?", is, is absolutely over the top and uncalled for. And I think this board owes Rutland Little League and Rutland Soccer an apology.
Really? Who's doing the work in the parking area out behind Marsh Field right now?
That's not, that's not land we lease.
But who's doing the work out there? You're gonna be utilizing it.
Maybe.
It's the town doing it, John.
I understand.
So, again, you wanna pick a fight with a guy that doesn't wanna fight?
Tom, I, I.
I'm trying to solve a problem.
Way, way off the Porta, the Porta Potties here.
The comment about the Board of Selectmen, that the leagues get the fields for nothing and they do nothing to contribute.
I think we need to get, get back to the Porta Potty part of it. I mean, I guess the whole point is that we were never paying for Porta Potties. We offered to pay for a portion of the Porta Potties, even though they're not, that they are used for recreational and soccer seems to have no problem paying for their portion of it because they utilize the Porta Potties.
Well, I mean, if Tom talked to Tom Jason Stratus, he's not even on the Board of Rutland Soccer anymore. So.
That's the name that was given to me in the conversation I had with him. He made it sound to me like he was.
I'm just telling you that it's a conversation with Jason Stratus. He's not the president of the board.
I don't know why he would say that to me and not have any connection, but.
Jason Pratt is the president.
If I may, my discussions back when this happened over the summer were with Mr. Pratt, and he did, he did not have an issue with the field.
Oh, okay. Yeah, cause you gave me Jason Stratus's name. I, I don't know. That's who I talked to. At least that's who he said he was.
I, yeah, I, I'll mine over Mr. Pratt.
Yeah.
And he's fine with paying a portion of it?
Yes.
And the town is offering to pay a portion of it. I, I, I think, and we were never paying it at all. It was being donated, which I, to be honest, you could probably get somebody to donate that. I mean, fund-raided donation.
We pay three Porta Potties around town every year, too. I mean, it's. And we can't, you're not getting them for free.
What do you mean?
We're not getting what for free?
No, that's what I'm saying. You're not gonna find somebody to donate a Porta Potty. That's what I'm saying.
Well, previously they were, right? Correct?
The one at Memorial?
Right. So they did, it was? I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's your call. It's your league. I mean, do what you feel is best, I guess. I mean, again, this whole thing started as a, a way to try and build a relationship. And you see us, we're moving, we're trying to figure out ways to come up with money. But I, I don't, you know, I mean, the dues, people pay dues and, and, and you get money from unions. That's what people expect you to spend the money for.
Responsibility for how we spend that money and how do we utilize that money? I'm just, I mean, I'm just curious. Is that, is it your purview to, to, to say how we should spend it? I mean.
You're not being forced.
About it's being a little, a little amount of money and that your dues pay for that. But I guess, I guess the question is, is it, is it my fiscal responsibility for how I manage that and, and the way that, that our auditors and, and our, and Little League International, or is it the Board of Selectmen's right to decide how Little League spends the, the revenue we bring in?
You're not being forced to do anything. You do anything you want. Like I said.
We were just offering to pay a portion of the Porta Potties. How you spend the rest of the money if you don't wanna put it towards the Porta Potties, I guess that's your choice. But I, I, this seems like a really ridiculous.
It is completely ridiculous.
This really seems unnecessary. We have offered to participate.
Yeah, I know, the October meeting.
I urge you to go back and look at that.
Yeah, urge, go back, everyone.
No, we, we understand the conversation. We understand that it's really going off base. This is not an expense that we covered in the past. We offered to participate. Soccer offered to participate. Through the town administrator, you can resolve it. If we, if you wanna participate and, and, and everybody agrees to pay towards it, then I guess we will agree to pay towards it.
Yeah.
If not, there will not, there won't be Porta Potties.
Okay.
Correct? Unless, I mean, unless anybody else on the board wants to make a motion or make any other comments. But I think we need to move on the Porta Potty conversation.
Yeah, this is it. He, you wanted to come in and talk, and that's it. I mean, it's, nobody's forcing you, John. The, the board's not forcing you. We, I'm trying.
I didn't come here to talk about Porta Potties. I came to talk about.
Well, that's what you asked to come to talk about is Porta Potties. Cause that's what, it's, discussion is about one Porta Potty.
Right, to, to address the, the comments that were made.
Yeah, I know, okay. We heard that. So do whatever you want, John. Your money. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Leah, did you have any questions?
No, I, I was under the impression that there was going to be a larger conversation about recreation as a whole and then see the agenda that was the Porta Potties specifically. I, I guess I was a little confused. So I think that there is value to having a larger recreation conversation. I know, even just coming back, but yeah, I think that needs to be a much larger conversation and involve Little League and soccer and recreation and, and other groups as well. So.
Okay. Any other?
No, we're good.
All right. Thank you. Economic Development Commission. Did Randy?
Actually, he hopped on Zoom because he had an headcount meeting at 7:00. So he's on Zoom.
I'm on. I stepped out of my ag commission meeting and I am on Zoom, I think.
All right. So you put your glasses on to look professional?
No.
All right. You, you had some comments and questions for the board regarding the, the makeup of the committee, et cetera?
Right. And I believe Tamika gave you a copy of a suggestion that had come forth with the assistance of Tamika and Anita Carlson. We're having a difficult time meeting quorum. And it was originally put in place to have seven people on the board. And we have some people that don't live in town. They couldn't even be alternate on there to be the thing. They also have two members that haven't, haven't been able to physically attend a few meetings that we wanted to consider. And then we thought about taking some of their, like the planning board has a spot on there to appoint somebody. The select board has somebody. The ag commission has somebody. Business owners have somebody. And we thought about removing that so it doesn't necessarily tie our hands to have people from those committees if we have other people on there. My suggestion is to possibly take the two members that aren't, I, I'd reduce the board to five if we could. I would like to appoint Sabrina Heinelomar on there, who has been an active member in some roundtable discussions that we've had recently, where she's very active in the town of Holden Economic Development Committee and has a lot to offer to us. And take the two, Tracy and Tony, two members that haven't been able to attend a lot of meetings and make them al, alternate members. And then maybe we can have enough members to fill the shoes. Tom has also, schedule doesn't permit coming to our meetings where he's busy with, with other town activities or family issues. He has asked to be resigned, which is before you tonight, to accept. And he's doing that out of the kindness of his heart to help make it so we can have a quorum. So that's a brief discussion of why I'd like to be on your agenda for tonight, please.
So Gary and Tamika, when we had a discussion, did we look to see if we'd have to formally change the, the way that the, we voted on developing this particular group committee? I mean, is it in writing? I mean, it was all written up as far as the type of people that would be on the board, et cetera, right? Do we have to revise that?
So, um, it's basically at the board's discretion because this board is essentially proposed by the former town administrator and then accepted by the select board. So if you were to make any changes tonight, you would just be specific in your motion as to what those changes are, which I did list at the bottom of that proposal.
Okay.
So basically, whatever motion you're taking tonight would supersede anything previously that was established.
Okay. So this takes out the specific, having to be one of all these specific categories, right?
Correct. Yeah. So it reduces the, the full size to five members with two alternates. It reduces the, excuse me, it removes those designations so that we're not running the membership. And I forget, there was, I forgot maybe one other thing that I had put on there and I can't think of it off the top of my head.
So, so it's just what you wrote exactly here is what we want to make. And Randy, you've seen this?
Yes, I have.
All right. And does anybody have any questions or does someone wanna make a motion to make these revisions? Leah, Leah, do you have any questions before we make any motions?
I, my only comment was, I know all the boards and commissions and some groups are having issues with making quorum. And it's unfortunate. The thought for the membership of this board and commission, or this commission specifically, when, there's a lot of feedback that certain groups felt that they weren't, they should have an interest in it and they weren't given the opportunity to have an interest in it. I, like Randy's point, as far as kind of removing that it has been linked to planning or select board or, or whatever. But that was where that had come in from was the fact that in the past, there's been a lot of feedback that boards and commissions were upset that they felt that they should be included to have a voice and weren't. So, um, yeah. I, but I think the quorum issue is not only for economic development. It's across the board, unfortunately.
Randy, are you under the impression that people didn't feel they had the opportunity to join the committee or?
That's not my, no, that's not the impression. We haven't asked a ton of people. We kind of really didn't know what direction we were going in and we were kind of floating around a little bit. We didn't have a lot of direction. In the last few meetings that we were able to have, Central Mass Regional Planning has come in and given us some suggestion and maybe a direction to go in. And there's some excitement that we're doing that. And in the past, a group of friends have sat around a table and had a discussion that has been frowned upon because we're not able to make decisions and, and go forward in the right direction. So in turn, that's why it's been brought to my attention that we should reduce. And I haven't actively gone over and asked for more people to do it because the people that I think I'd like to have involved are extremely busy in their, in their other lives and, and doing that. So that's why I'd like you to consider going to a smaller board, keep the people that we have able to work between, you know, at the meetings and get some forward progress going in the right direction with some of our philosophy with them.
And, and just, just as a caution based on your, this conversation, you realize that this is, is a formal board that, that we are establishing. So if you have a quorum, it would have to be a public meeting? So.
That is correct.
I know. So if you, I mean, I just, when you talked about around the table conversations, I just wanna caution to be sure that when we decrease the size of the board, that the conversations are not quorumed and that they are public meetings. You know what I'm saying?
Well, all meetings are quorum. If, if you have a quorum, the meeting is public.
Right.
If you don't have a quorum, you shouldn't meet at all.
Right. And you just talked about having some conversations around the table. I just wanna make sure that, you know, the conversations aren't a quorum and that they're at a public meeting, if that's the case.
Oh, you are correct. Yes. And that's what I'm trying to improve on. Yeah.
Right. I, I just wanted to bring that point up because, you know, you're talking about a lot of conversations and stuff. So just to make sure when we formalize this, that, that you're limited to, if it's three people, it's a quorum. All right?
Sure. Understood.
Any, any questions or other comments?
Can I, may I, through the chair? Randy, so you're showing on the proposed new structure that you will have six permanent members on the new structure portion of this. Tom is obviously resigning. And then my question is, so are you planning on reducing it to five or are you planning on moving Sabrina from an alternate to a permanent to make it to seven?
So I don't have that in front of me at the moment. So can you rattle off the?
Tamika, do you know the ones that are staying? Did you?
Sure. Well, so it's Randy Jordan. It's.
Tracy Sasseville, Anthony St. Paul, Jeff Gibbs, Elizabeth Callahan, Grace Maboya. And that's it. And then Tom is resigning. And then the other one, you have two alternates, Sabrina and Jessica Johnson.
Well, Jess, Jessica is not a, Jessica is not an alternate because she doesn't live in town.
Okay.
So who, Gary, who was the first person you enlisted?
Tracy.
Okay. So can we move Tracy to the alternate position and put Sabrina in her position, please?
So this says select board member designate. So Tracy Sasseville is designated by the select board?
She has been. Tracy has not been able to be at a meeting in quite some time and I have not been able to communicate with her. Tony is also on there and has got health issues. Neither one has officially resigned. I believe Tony's term is up here in '23 anyways. I'm not 100% certain when Tracy's is.
Both in, both in, both in '23, Tracy and, and Tony.
If I may, that was part of my proposal, is that those two positions would be the two out of the seven that were removed because those terms are up and those members have been seemingly indicated that they're not gonna be able to participate anymore. Tom is, is presiding effective tonight. Sabrina is looking for appointments. We are going to appoint Sabrina essentially to Tom's seat, so she'll be a full-time member. There would be two alternate positions available. Jessica Johnson serves in an advisory role. And I don't have it in front of me. I know Grace would still be on there.
Jeff Gibbs still?
Jeff Gibbs, yep, we believe is still gonna stay on there.
So I understand about the two coming off that's gonna make it to five, but that hasn't happened. So how do we appoint somebody additional and cut it down to five? That's not gonna work.
We can appoint, we're gonna appoint Sabrina to take Tom's seat.
Okay.
Cause Tom is resigning.
And then at the, then can we make this contingent at the end of the year? It goes to a five-year?
Correct. So it's gonna have to be contingent on this being at the end of the fiscal year because we have to wait for those seats to fall off unless those two members come forward and formally resign. If they don't, those two seats would just fall off at the end of the fiscal year.
Did you catch, catch that, Randy?
I understood that. My question for you is, can we do it effectively immediately? Can we put Tracy and Tony and put them as alternates? So they're still really on the committee but not there? And then I can reduce my quorum. If we keep and Sabrina there and we keep it at a seven board, my quorum is still four, which has been challenging in the past.
I don't think we can just go and move them as alternates without talking to them because that's not fair. That would be just like removing them without speaking to them. You know, I mean, I don't think we can do that without their consent or any kind of written notification. So unless they decide they're no longer able or, or wanting to stay on the board and you get written notification from them, we can't take them off.
Understood. So if you put Sabrina in Tom's spot, that still gives me a seven board with two vacant positions in alternate. So then I'd have to have four people for a quorum to make it work. Is that my understanding?
Correct. And then effective July 1st, those two positions will be eliminated. So it would then become a five-member board with two alternates.
So in July, it would be a five-member board, but until those two fall off, it would remain at the seven?
And how do we, how do we deal with, when and how do we deal with the positions of planning board and?
No, we're, we're eliminating the actual categories. We're just saying it's gonna be a five-board member representative of the community. I don't think we're gonna specify specific individuals. I think that's in the, in this written statement.
Okay. If I was to get a letter, so I'm okay with that and I understand that. And, you know, it's March already and July is not very far away. If I have challenges with the quorum, if I get a letter from Tracy and Tony to go to alternates to reduce my board, when they, if they give a letter to resign or go to that, is that, could we do that quicker than July or do we still have to wait till July?
If we read the motion accordingly, saying that once they go to a five-board, five-member board, that we, it would continue on as five members? Cause is there a way we can word it, saying that once?
Yeah. To be, to be honest, I think at this point, if, Randy, I think if you were gonna reach out to get a, a letter to say that they could be alternates, I might recommend at that point just asking if they would consider resigning because it, it seems like they aren't able to participate either way. And that would kind of make it a clean cut because those two spots are gonna be cut June 30th anyways, if that makes sense. So it almost doesn't make sense to go through that effort to have them be alternates for the next, you know, four or so months. Maybe if you can contact them, just have them resign. Because once they resign, they're no longer a member of the board.
Right. And, and if they haven't been able to make your meetings, it's unlikely they're gonna be able to make them from now until July. So we could make the motion contingent on.
The two res.
Two vacant resignations, right?
Uh huh.
Yeah, we can do that.
So we'll do it that way, Randy? So if they do decide to, to resign, then the board would automatically go to a five-member board. If not, you'll need to wait until July.
Understood. Thank you.
So good luck. Make that motion. Skip.
Can I make a comment there, Randy?
Yeah.
I have the same number of people on my board and I wasn't allowed to do any of that without it going to town floor. Anita had, the bylaw committee had to make this recommendation.
That's, so that is because there are certain boards that are governed by the bylaw and by MGL. This particular board was, I don't wanna say arbitrarily created, but I guess arbitrarily created by the former town administrator. So there, he chose the designations. He chose the number of members that had to serve on the board. So there was no official capacity outside of the select board. So, there was no official capacity outside of the Select Board affirming that.
It doesn't get moved over at some point to act like the, to be governed under the board?
Not unless it's written into the town's Bylaws. Does that make sense?
I mean, because this board, just like the 300th Committee and other committees, it may be a, you know, depends on, you know, if this board, you know, grows into something that we need to be more permanent and present, you know, we may make a bylaw about it, make it permanent, but it may be a marketing tool to stimulate business for, you know, the length of when it's, you know, that it's necessary. So, I guess it's...
Rachel, you ready for this?
I'm ready for it. Tamika, are you ready?
I don't know.
I'd like to make a motion that we change the economic development size from seven to five, designated, staggered terms and removing, right? Let me, I'm going to put that on the end.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Remove designation that members must be business owners and eliminate the planning board as a permanent member. This board will be seven-man until July unless we have two resignations from, I'm not going to use his names, or not, no need to do it.
Just, you can just use designations of two members. You can...
Just two members. Two members of the Economic Development Commission resigns, then it will be a five-man term.
I like it.
Good. Okay. Second?
Any other discussion?
Clock eye. Galvin eye?
All right, go ahead.
Just clarification. So, if I resign and Sabrina resigns, it still has the ability to go to a five-board for voting purposes, correct?
Right, right. Once there's resignations that bring it down to a five-board commission, then that's what it is.
And then another question is, we're going to do that alternating three, two, one kind of thing? The committee will have a decision of how those people are appointed and give a suggestion to the selectmen in July?
June.
Yep. I would say so.
In June, yeah, so previous to it. So, yeah, so we'd have to have, so that it rotates, so that not, you know, the majority doesn't go all off at the same time. So, once we add Sabrina, she will take over Tom's term, and then we'll restructure the terms according to where June, the effective July.
Okay. Yep, understood.
Okay.
Now, is there a way, part of this motion, that you should consider, right now you have a five-person board with two alternates, should you consider now, while you're doing the motion, to, you know, can you just use the word alternative, alternate members? So, if I have four people that are very active and can cover when I got some people aren't there, is that acceptable, or how do you do that politically correct?
Well, those alternates, that hasn't changed, and then if, and Sabrina's going to vacate one, and the other one's vacant, so then the board would, your commission would have to come to us and say you want to recommend somebody else be an alternate, right?
So, after I fill those two spots, if I have a third person that comes, I can just ask the board at any time to increase that to a larger number. Is that correct?
As long as your committee makes a recommendation to appoint an alternative, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Right, yeah. So, I was just going to say, for example, with the Donning Board of Appeals, if a full member leaves and they have an alternate, they'll vote amongst their own board to move that alternate up to a full membership, which then leaves that alternate vacant, and they come to the Select Board to, you know, approve that decision.
Yeah.
Basically how it goes.
Okay.
And then we will still have to make two separate motions for Sabrina and Tom.
Right. Okay. So, this is just to change the size of the committee?
Yes.
Do you have any comments or questions, Leah, before we do the final?
Nope, this is Tom. Thank you.
Okay.
Clock eye. Can I vote even though I'm involved, right?
Well, yeah.
Get Galvin eye, okay.
Nichols eye.
Wait, but I...
All right. Now, a motion to accept Tom's resignation.
So moved.
Second. We'll let you leave, you'll leave you out of this one.
Okay, that's, that's...
All right. Roll call?
Clock eye.
Recuse yourself. Nichols eye.
Galvin.
And Leah?
Wait, but I, wait, but I with officiation. Thanks for, sorry, Tom.
Thanks for not going. All right. Now, if I can get a recommendation for appointment of Sabrina.
Hallam moaning. So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Clock eye. Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Wait, but I with officiation.
All right. So, you're all set, Randy?
All right, thank you. And the committee and Tom, Jay George is working on that suggestion to coming forward about the economic development director person, so just to keep you in a loop of that.
I don't have any money. I'm only going to do it.
All right. Next on the list is Moses Howe Award, naming the 2023 award winner. Tamika did provide us with a list of nominees. Some of them received more than one nomination, but we probably should, I'd like to read all the names so that people know that people recognize.
And I did also put it on the website if anybody was interested. I put the names and the number of nominations that you...
Oh, you did? So, it's been public?
Yes.
So, do I need to read them?
Whatever. Whatever you want. I just wanted folks to know it was out there.
So, Ronald Marsh, Barbara Campbell, Dale Perkins, and Ann Tripp, Dick Williams, Elizabeth de Fosse, Justin Bassett, Kenneth Lowe, Carrie Remington, Mike Grover, Robin Tirani, and Thomas Galvin. How'd that get on? You can't vote.
I have no idea. I didn't even know we were voting.
So, those were the nominees. As I said, there were, there were some multiple nominations. Obviously, with the passing of Ronald Marsh, there were several nominations for his contributions, but all these people have contributed greatly. Obviously, their names are well-known to the town. So, obviously, I'd say we do 11. I don't know if the board has any comments or want to make any nominations, or...
I'd like to nominate Ronald Marsh.
Second. All right. And just as far as discussion, obviously, with the passing of Mr. Marsh and his contributions to the town, obviously, I think it's a fitting tribute. And as I said, I don't want to take away from, obviously, we have a lot of great names here, and hopefully, we will see them in the future as well, because they've all contributed greatly to the town, which is much appreciated. Any questions or comments, Leah?
Nope. Oh, good. I just wanted to actually thank the public for all their nominations. It's great to see the participation on this, and that there's a strong desire to keep this moving forward, so thank you.
All right. Roll call, vote?
Clock eye. Galvin eye.
Nichols eye.
Wait, but I.
All right. Thank you. And at some point, we will have some... Go ahead.
Tamika, I'll put together everything I have for the, for the award stuff and get it to you.
Yes, that would be very helpful.
I was just going to say, at some point, we will have an actual announcement, dedication.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Last on the list was Select Board Goals and Objectives.
I'm sorry, can we add that last item? Can we add that to the KP Law?
Oh, okay. Did everybody have a chance to review this? Did you review this, Gary? Do you have an understanding of what KP Law is asking of us here regarding Hubbardston?
No, I have not. You don't?
I want to represent Hubbardston.
May I?
Yeah, yeah.
So, essentially, KP Law has been asked...
Oh, I knew about that. I'm sorry.
It's a...
Go ahead.
The Town of Hubbardston, you miss a full agreement with the Town of Rutland for the dispatch. However, KP Law represents both us and the Town of Hubbardston, so they are notifying us that that exists. They do not see this as being a conflict of interest. They stated in the letter, if they feel it reaches that point, they will recuse themselves. However, the law does state that the Select Board has to approve them moving forward in this way, and if you do, you have to vote on it, and there's a document that you have to sign, which is what's before you, Missy.
Okay.
Yeah. Does anybody have any other questions? If I can get a motion?
Motion to sign. Second?
All right. Roll call?
Clock eye. Galvin eye.
Nichols eye?
Wait, but I.
All right.
I knew about that. I just, I'm sorry.
You're making me nervous there. All right. Just, I had mentioned to Tamika, I mean, in the past, last year, we had our goals and objectives listed. Actually, Tamika, if we, I don't remember them all, so if we, I know there was staffing, which Tom and I, we actually talked about, we brought Jay in. There was financial, which is, I'm hoping to get, see what that Central Mass planning advisory might provide as far as financial. What were the, I'm sorry, the other categories? Do you remember the other subcategories? Skip what ones, or you one?
I don't even remember.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures, which Carol was working on quite a bit, right? And with you?
Yeah, and I would say that even just since the beginning of the year, the board has approved...
Yeah, we just recently approved several, so we're moving along on that. I just want to make sure that we're addressing the things that we...
Communication, specifically, the staff and boards and commissions, and you've started your...[1725.23]